The following is a production of Cary TV, the Town of Cary's government access channel.
Call to order the April 19 quasi judicial meeting of the Cary Town Council. And at this time, I'd ask that you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin this evening, I'd like to recognize and introduce our attorney for the evening, David Gad, to my, all the way to my left. He's, he's taking the place of Mr. Silverstein tonight. Welcome and thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
We also have two council members that are out this evening. Ed's dealing with a family matter and an illness, and Jennifer's out of town with work. And so there's five of us, which is plenty to hold a quasi judicial meeting. We're at Agenda Item 1 Point 2, which is adoption of our agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, motion carries unanimously. Our first public hearing, Wood Hall subdivision 14 SBO 4, an overview of the hearing procedures and detailed rules are attached to the printed agenda. All speakers who would like to speak during this public hearing must be administered an oath by Mrs. Johnson, who is to my right, and will pause just a moment to allow those individuals who'd like to speak at this public hearing to approach Mrs. Johnson and receive their oath. The council's going to pause from taking any action or doing anything until that has been completed.
At this time, I'll ask if any council members have had any site visits, ex parte communications,
financial relationships, specialized knowledge, or close relationship to an affected person to disclose, starting on my left with Ms. Bush.
I have not.
Mr. France?
No, sir.
I have not.
Mr. Smith?
Mr. George?
I have none.
All right. Based on the disclosures you've heard from our council members, I'd invite anyone to the podium who has been sworn in to speak if you have an objection to a council member's participation in this hearing. Seeing no one, we'll continue, and I'll open the quasi judicial public hearing and recognize Mr. Hales of our staff, who will introduce the hearing.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. As you indicated, the first item on tonight's agenda is a request for a modification to the town's development standards as it affects a plan that has already been administratively approved by the Town of Cary. Staff, Wood Hall subdivision located on the western frontier of Cary, Luder Shop Road, West Farrell Road impacting approximately 76 and a half acres. Project located just west of the Chatham County line along Luder Shop Road. There are no, CTP map doesn't cover this far, but you can see that Luder Shop Road would be considered an extension of Morseville Parkway as a thoroughfare. And this is the approved subdivision layout, 144 units. There's a single access from Luder Shop Road at the northern end of the property. There are several road stubs going east, west, south that meet the connectivity ordinance for the town.
...access points as well, and I only see one with them.
They're less than 100 units.
Oh, that's right.
There's actually another subdivision approved here, but even with the addition of those units, it's still under 100 units.
That's right. Okay. Thank you. Councilmembers?
I...oh, go ahead.
No, I had two questions. One, there was a comment that Public Safety said there was a reasonable likelihood. What was that in reference to? And what does that definition mean?
There is no definition. The Public Safety, in particular, Fire indicated they were okay with the modification moving forward, provided that we were fairly certain that development to the south continued moving forward. There is no definition for timely manner. It's just kind of a gut feeling whether counsel is comfortable accepting that risk of, you know, 144 units off a single point of access if worst-case scenario occurs and that road never gets built.
But nobody spends $7 million on a piece of property without doing something with it.
That's a pretty big investment.
And if I could, I'd like to ask the Fire Chief a question about that single point of access. So I don't know the width of that road. I don't know the terrain left or right. I'm thinking, worst-case scenario, something is blocking that entrance which would prevent fire and rescue. Help me with your experience, what you've seen, what might happen, what risks we're taking.
Well, Mayor, just from a practical standpoint, with respect to connectivity, that's exactly the reason, the prime reason, that we look for multiple points of access to neighborhoods, and the town has elected to call that number at 100. And so the only thing that we're saying, restating the obvious, is that from our perspective, our viewpoint, having more than one point of access is a prudent path. It would be, I don't know how responsible it would be on my part to try to predict what the probabilities would be if we had an emergency inside and then that access point was blocked. But the reality is that it could happen, and so that's why we're after two points of access.
And I understand, and that's the reason for my question. I guess I was trying to get at, if the road had something blocking it, whatever that is, a tree, a vehicle, or something, would a fire...
A neighborhood party. Could be a neighborhood party blocks roads all the time.
Okay, so...
It doesn't have to be a...
Is there any way to get around that based on the terrain around that connection? I don't know. If it's like this, or that, or...
I'm not familiar, Mayor. I apologize, but I'm not familiar with the terrain.
I'm just trying to evaluate the risk of one, and I think it's highly unlikely that that intersection, I mean, that access point might be blocked, but I just want to make sure if we're taking risk, what that risk actually is. I'm trying to identify it.
Can I follow up?
Yes, please.
So I guess there's a, I know you can't comment on probability, but the danger of security of there being 15 houses back there, and it's the same entrance, the same tree could block you from 15 houses.
It could.
So we're blocking, whether we're blocking, if we have a single entrance, no matter how few the houses are, we're running a risk, we're only running a risk for 15 homeowners instead of 100 homeowners. So where is our comfort level? Why is 100 the magic number? Because you're still, if you have a single-in, single-out development, you're running that risk for however many people live there.
I understand.
So whether it's 100, or whether it's 144, you're still running the risk.
With that argument, it could be 2,000, you know what I mean?
That's the point. So what's the point? Is the point traffic entrance, or is the point...
This emergency access is my concern. If somebody has a heart attack, and that entrance is blocked, and they don't get there in time because they're trying to clear that entrance, that person dies. What is the likelihood of that? Who knows?
Well, it goes up if there are 100 houses back there. It goes up if it's senior living, and there are 100 houses back there.
The 100 wasn't just based on public safety. The 100 was also originally, when the LDO, because I was on planning and zoning board when it came through, wasn't just because of public safety. It was for all the great reasons that we have connectivity. It improves not just response time, but it lessens the amount of gas we spend for fleet management, for delivering mail. It also reduces the amount of traffic going through a single entrance. So there's lots of reasons for that 100.
Yeah, I agree.
But the mayor was just bringing up the safety issue.
Okay, so my question, Chief, is that the, looking at it, I have more concern about these long stubs for a fire truck than I've got for, but maybe that's just after you get to the emergency versus getting out. But that, you know, you can get there, but you just can't get out very easily.
Yeah, and I think most all, if they're cul-de-sac, they have the appropriate turnarounds, and they're of the appropriate length.
Have these stubs all been shown with cul-de-sacs? The drawing, I can't quite make it out.
They did, and it's a very small scale, but they actually do have temporary cul-de-sacs at the end of all those.
Awesome. So it won't just be a stub with a sign, it'll have a cul-de-sac with a sign?
Correct. Any stub longer than 150 feet, we require. Today, it's actually in right-of-way. If you look at the stubs in Providence, Yates Pond, which you're going through today, you'll see right-of-way around them. When Woodhull was approved in 2015, they're actually in easement. They're temporary turnarounds.
Okay, all right, that answered my question.
Other questions?
We have our connectivity ordinance for a very good reason, I think, as some other folks have said. However, on this one, when the development is, you know, what'd you say, Kevin, on Kerry's western frontier, or in other words, in the middle of nowhere, there really isn't much to connect to, and it is going to rely on the development to the southeast to help make that connection. I get why the development to the southeast is starting where they're starting, at White Oak Church Road, because that's going to be their access point. So for them to start, you know, over here with the development that's before us today makes no sense, because there's still nowhere to go to to provide that second access, so they have to work their way over there. So I get that. If this was in a different part of Cary, then I'd probably have a lot more heartburn on this one, but given the proposed project, and as well as the development that's going to occur around it in the very near future, I mean, let's face it, nobody buys a piece of property for $7 million and does nothing with it. I don't really have much heartburn. I also really like how they have provided numerous stubs in the proposal, which is basically saying, not only are we going to have more than two in-access points in the future, we're going to have three, four, maybe more. So I think they've done due diligence in regarding and planning their site and their development to provide even greater access points in the future. So for those reasons, I would be inclined to support it.
Yeah, and please understand, I'm not speaking against it. I was just evaluating the risk involved. And another concern I have is the worst-case scenario, but I believe, I believe that market will drive the Wake County first, as was said, and then the Chatham County is probably going to be in line with this property. And so if this property is selling, then they'll probably sell too. And so I don't have the concern that these won't be built. I actually believe that they will. Like you said, they've invested a lot of money, and I'm assuming they want to get that back as soon as possible, so...
So there is a risk, but at this point...
Right, exactly. We're evaluating.
What we're weighing is if we get that development in the reasonable future, we will have all the connectivities and the safety based on the stub outs and everything else. So it's really one of those cases where how comfortable we trust that progress moving forward.
And like I said, I believe the market will drive this connectivity. I mean, I can't see that Chatham County piece down there to the south sitting vacant if this is developing to the north. That just doesn't make sense, so...
Could you bring up the picture that shows the number of houses in each phase on the Woodhull? Okay, so the plan here is to do basically the big loop, except not, or that's the 100 that was identified originally, right? And then the other two, the 23 and the 21, were the requested ones to be completed, and the applicant's proposal is, listen, we don't want there to be disruption to all of these folks by having to do those two separately in second.
Correct. The initial phase is the one that is not shaded on this, the 100 lots in the center with the big loop and the cul-de-sac, and then the 2A and 2B are the two red-shaded phases.
And when this was approved, when the site plan was approved, the developer knew that the most they could do is 100 before they had two entrances or two points of access.
Correct. The second bullet in the staff observations are the notes that were actually on the approved cover sheet, which says, "Project phase to only allow maximum 100 residential units to be recorded prior to addition of a second vehicular access to public streets."
So in that case, the developer knew that he could only do 100, and what was their plan then? Was Providence already in the pipeline, and they were going to...
This project was moving ahead of, this was submitted well before Providence, Yates Pond came in.
So they didn't know?
I mean, it was in the rezoning process, but it hadn't been...
They were only going to do the 100.
Correct.
And now they want to do all of them at one time?
Now that they tell that there's another development coming in.
Now that there's one, potentially come in.
Correct.
Because they could do the whole Wake County, as we've seen, some of the developments are doing the Wake County, and they're having lag time with the Chatham County part, and who knows when that connection might come? It could be a year, it could be two years, it could be five years.
But if the Chatham County, if the connectivity to the south is driven by Chatham County sales, this subdivision won't sell if that subdivision's not selling, you know, both.
Depending, I mean, it's not, I don't know the product points. Right, you don't know the product, right?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing that bothers me is the uncertainty and the risk. I mean, I just liken it back to the Turner Creek problem that we have, where we have, you know, hundreds of homes off of a single access point, and now anything that comes in, it's a huge choke point, and those neighbors are so unhappy by what this council, or previous council, did by allowing all those homes off of a single access point. That's why the 100 number was thrown out at that time. It looks like these are different lot sizes. I'm not sure if they are. I don't even want to guess. But I think this developer walked into this knowing full well they could only do 100, and then something else would have to happen. The other, you know, maybe there was a stronger development agreement to ensure that Providence would build that road. I just don't feel comfortable saying, yeah, let's go ahead and do it, hoping that something else is going to be there. I've seen hopes turn into, you know, dashed hopes, and I don't want to, personally, that's just where I'm sitting here.
I agree with you, and I think the developer was respectful of the ordinance in that he was only going to build 100 homes until the second access point came about. And now that it is most likely that that second access point is coming about, he now would prefer to build the other 44 units to do a more comprehensive and holistic development and not have any disruptions, damage to roads, streets, infrastructure, and those things. Get it done right, get it done once, and get it done.
I hear you.
So...
I hear you. I just think that there'd be other ways to do it, to split the development up, and, you know, I'd just like to mitigate the risk at this point.
Other comments?
Is this, is this the only right-of-way, am I reading the map right, that at the top to Luder Shop Road, is that one, that is the only place there is touching any road?
Correct. It's a narrow strip. It was purchased from these two properties to connect down to the property.
Okay. If there are no other comments, we can move to the motion phase of the public hearing, and I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the modification request. For the reasons discussed, I move that we approve the modification request made by the applicant, as the request meets all of the approval criteria of the applicable sections of the LDO.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
And a second further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one. Thank you, Mr. Hales.
Thank you.
We now move to the next two agenda items. Decook Properties LLC annexation and quasi-judicial hearing for public storage West Cary are related and will be presented together by staff. Please note that counsel will not be accepting public comments on the annexation. The public hearing for the annexation was held on December 10, 2015. Counsel will accept public comments on the public storage West item. When we're ready to vote, we need to vote on the annexation first, followed by the special use site plan. An overview of the hearing procedures, detailed rules are attached to the printed agenda, and all speakers who would like to speak at this public hearing must be administered an oath by Mrs. Johnson to my right. And we'll pause just a moment to allow those individuals who would like to speak at the public hearing to approach Mrs. Johnson and receive their oaths. And counsel will pause until this has been completed. Okay. I'll now ask council members if they've had any site visits, expertise, communication, financial relationships, specialized knowledge, or close relationship to an affected person to disclose, starting with Mr. George. I have not. Mr. Smith?
I have not.
I have not. Ms. France?
Nope.
Ms. Bush?
I received a Facebook message from someone inquiring about it, but that's it.
Okay. Based on the disclosures you've heard from council members, I'd invite anyone to the podium who's been sworn in to speak, if you have an objection to a council member's participation in this hearing. Seeing no one, we'll continue, and I'll open the quasi-judicial public hearing. Mr. Loveland of our staff will introduce this hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, counsel. This is a request for consideration of a special use permit and site plan approval for a mini-storage use. There's also a request for consideration of an annexation. This site is located on the east side of North Carolina Highway 55, north of the intersection of Morrisville Parkway and NC-55. This site is located, the ETJ is currently not located in the town limits, of course, so you will be taking annexation action on the annexation request. There was a public hearing held for this annexation item in December of last year, of 2015. There is a GO Triangle Transit Route that is operating currently on NC-55 along the frontage. No greenways are planned. There is a street-side trail planned for the west side of NC-55, so it does not affect the site. There are no stream buffers or wetlands currently on the site. Site is located within a office, research, and development conditional use zoning district. There are two conditions associated with that zoning district, one pertaining to the height of the building, limiting it to two stories or 35 feet, the other pertaining to the landscaping on the east side of the property along the railroad, where there is an increased shrub planting rate. The zoning on the property to the north is also that ORD CU. You have R40, a residential cross on the west side of NC-55, which is a vacant property, and a PDD to the east, this grayish-looking district, which is a residential-oriented PDD. The mini-storage, of course, is a special use in the ORD district, which is one of the reasons why the plan is in front of you today. It is also over 100,000 square feet. The four-acre site is currently vacant. Very little, if any, mature trees are located on the site. The middle of the site is completely clear, and while it's a few, that's three or four feet above the elevation of North Carolina 55, it is a fairly flat site. You see the existing town water tower on the adjacent property to the south, the railroad tracks to the east of the vacant property to the west, and of course, the existing residential properties to the east. The applicant is proposing to construct a site with six individual buildings for a total of 136,000 square feet, just over that a little bit. Two vehicular access points for the site, a southern driveway, which will be an exit-only, a northern driveway, which will be an entrance and an exit, which will be shared with the property to the north, so that provides connectivity to the vacant property to the north. NC-55 is median-divided, so these are both limited to access to northbound 55. Their sidewalk is proposed along 55 and will also connect into the site, and there is a stormwater control device in the northeast corner of the device as well. And the applicant is also proposing to construct a deceleration lane that would service the northern driveway, which is the entrance into the site. These are the proposed elevations for the buildings. This is the main building, the two-story building. This elevation B here would be the frontage along NC-55. You can see the transparency. Of course, the buildings, all six buildings are required to meet the standards of the community appearance manual. This is just a sketch plan at this point, so they haven't had to document the exact numbers for compliance. This is just more of an illustrative conceptual drawing at this point. The facade A is the northern facade. Buildings three and four on the southern end of the site, these also have frontage on NC-55. You can see the transparency for those frontages that are visible to the street. And then lastly, the three internal buildings to the site do not have a transparency requirement. You can note the storage bay doors on the facades, and at the bottom, you can see the blank facade that is facing adjacent to the railroad on the eastern property line. The primary material for the facades of these buildings is concrete masonry unit. No modifications in this request that require counsel action. Staff did approve two modification requests, one being a retaining wall and the stormwater control device, the other pertaining to a dedicated loading area for the site. That concludes staff's initial presentation. I will, of course, return after all other presenters have had a chance to give their testimony.
Thank you. This time, I'll call in the applicant's attorney to present arguments and evidence in support of the application by addressing the applicable approval criteria.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors. I'm Lacy Reeves, 150 Fayetteville Street in Raleigh, here tonight on behalf of Public Storage Corporation, the petitioner in this proceeding. As Doug pointed out, this is a request for a special use permit for a self-storage facility of approximately 136,000 square feet on a four-acre parcel on the east side of NC-55, just north of this intersection with the Morrisville Parkway. The parcel is zoned office, research, and development conditional use. You've heard the staff summary of our proposal, and I think you have a comprehensive staff report that has been provided to you, which we would ask be made a part of the record. We will establish tonight that the proposals that are, the proposal that is before you, meets all seven criteria for the approval in the LDO of a special use permit, and that the site plan that is before you also meets the criteria of the LDO for site plan approval. We'll establish that the development will conform with a comprehensive plan and other official plans of the Town of Cary. The development will not endanger the public health or safety. We'll show that the use is reasonably necessary for the public health and general welfare of the citizens of Cary. The development will not substantially injure the value of adjoining properties. It will be in harmony with the character of the area in which it's located. We'll show that it's located with respect, appropriately located with respect to transportation facilities, utilities, fire, and police protection. And lastly, as far as the special use permit is concerned, that it will not cause traffic congestion or create traffic or pedestrian hazards. I have with me tonight a team of experts who have expert witnesses who have worked on this project over the course of the past months. Our first witness will be Mr. Corey Howell, who is a civil engineer and planner with Kimley Horn and Associates. Our second witness will be Bill Copper, who is an independent consultant and business analyst who specializes in deals and proposals involving mini-storage development. Also with us tonight is Mr. Travis Fluid, a transportation engineer with Kimley Horn. And our last witness will be Neil Gustafson, who is a licensed NAI praiser based in Raleigh. Mr. Copper, Mr. Fluid, and Mr. Gustafson have all submitted written reports to staff, which I think have been provided as part of the materials provided to you in anticipation of this meeting. I'm going to call the witnesses up one at a time for their presentations. I will stay at the podium. I may ask a follow-up question, but we'll move through, we'll move through our evidence just as quickly as we possibly can. And our first witness is Mr. Corey Howell.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Corey Howell, civil engineer, licensed professional engineer in North Carolina, South Carolina, and Florida. My business address is 421 Fayetteville Street, Raleigh, North Carolina. Thank you for your time here tonight. Just want to give a brief overview of the project, a little bit about me first. Undergraduate degree in civil engineering, and have been practicing civil engineer with Kimley Horn for 10 and a half years, working on a wide variety of land development projects, including a significant amount in commercial development, which is in front of you tonight. My role on this project has been the engineer of record for the project, also project manager from a land development, site planning, and approval standpoint. And just a little bit of background and more information about the project you have in front of you. Doug did a great job, gave an overview of the project, and just want to talk a little bit more about some of the aspects of the project and the site, the location. It's approximately a four-acre site between Morrisville Parkway and Morrisville Carpenter Roads, just east of 55, railroad, 100-foot railroad right-of-way to the east, and Carpenter Upchurch Road to the east of that. Site, as described earlier, is undeveloped, generally open site with a few smaller trees around the perimeter of the site. There is a Town of Cary water tower on the property to the south of us. The parcel to the north of us is planned for future commercial development, and planned for a gas station at this point. And to the west of us is NC-55, four-lane, median-divided road. Some of the surrounding characteristics and just general information, the use is very similar in use to other uses in the area. There are similar storage facilities to the north and to the south of us along NC-55. There is also a gas station and auto repair site to the north, along 55, town fire station to the north, and there's a soil and mulch facility to the south of us, as well as an Army Reserve Facility and Contractor Storage Yard further to the south along 55. So in my opinion, professional opinion, I believe this use is in harmony with the surrounding uses of the site. Just a little bit more about the proposed development that you see in front of you on the screen. As was discussed, we are proposing a right-turn lane, deceleration lane into the site at the north end of the project with a shared access drive with the future commercial parcel to the north. That will then enter into our project site, where the main office and leasing office for the facility will be located on the north end of the main building, Building 1. As you move through to the site and around to the east and the south, you will see the stormwater pond that was referenced earlier, and then the majority of the site south of the Building 1 and to the east and south of that will all be gated and closed off with access, and really for the security of the customers coming to the site, and will only be by access keypad only into the facility. That will be gated, and then, you know, generally, customers will be allowed to come in through the site and circle around Buildings 2, 3, 4, and 5, and go to their respective lease unit. And then there will be egress out onto NC-55 in an egress-only lane, as was discussed Just a little bit more information about the buildings proposed. Building 1 will be a two-story climate-control building. Buildings 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 will all be one-story, roll-up-door-type, traditional access units. In my professional opinion, the project complies with all of the LDO requirements, including Chapter 7 and 8, as well as town standards and specifications. Just a little bit more information about buffers around the perimeter of the site. As required by code, the buffer along the west side of the site, along NC-55, will be a 30-foot streetscape buffer. The buffer to the south, along the water tower parcel, will be a 10-foot Type C buffer, and the buffer to the east, along the railroad right-of-way, will be a 20-foot Type B buffer, and then the buffer to the north, along the shared access drive in the future commercial development parcel, will be a 12-foot Type C buffer. development parcel will be a 12-foot type-C buffer. As was discussed, there are, and as I mentioned earlier, you know, there is a 100-foot railroad right-of-way to the east, as well as Carpenter Upchurch Road further on to the east side of the property. You know, as mentioned, there are a number of other similar uses to the north and to the south, and feel like this is in harmony with the surrounding development. Adequate utilities are available to serve the site from a water and sewer standpoint, and public fire and, and police protection is available to the site, as, as has been mentioned. So with that, I will conclude my testimony.
Thank you, Corey. And I will note, I failed to note in making my introductory remarks, that as you know, this type of facility provides leased space to members of the public. The members of the public who lease spaces, enclosed spaces within this mini-storage warehouse facility will sign leases with the owner, with Public Storage. Those leases have specific provisions that deal with the use of the, of the units. Tenants are not allowed to operate businesses from those units. They're not allowed to engage in activities like practicing a rock band or anything like that at this facility. And they are also prohibited from storing any highly flammable or toxic material in the facility. There will be employees of Public Storage present on the facility six days a week during normal business hours. And as Corey mentioned, I believe the actual storage areas will be gated and they'll be actually accessed only through key codes or some type of electronic, electronic device. I'm sure you saw in the staff report that staff has concluded, and I would concur from my analysis, that this proposal is entirely consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. The use that is proposed is a use that in the Northwest Regional Area Plan and Carpenter Community Plans is designated for, for this, this area. So we can answer questions at any time, Your Honor, or the witnesses can come back and answer questions. Do you all have questions for Corey now?
We prefer all the testimony when we enter into the deliberative phase, then the council will engage.
Good, okay. And our next witness is Mr. Bill Copper.
Good evening.
Mr. Copper, you want to tell us a little bit about yourself, your background?
Sure. My name is Bill Copper, and I'm a consultant with Self-Storage 101. We're a consulting company that specializes in the self-storage industry and primarily do feasibility studies for projects like this, for development of a self-storage facility. We also do due diligence audits for acquisitions in the self-storage business, and also operational audits to help operators increase their operational efficiencies.
And how many studies of that nature have you conducted over the course of the last five years?
Studies of this nature, feasibility studies, a little more than 50. The other studies, probably 100 and a quarter altogether in the last five years.
And were you engaged to conduct a feasibility study with respect to this proposed development?
Yes, we were.
And would you describe for us, for the council, the findings of your study?
Well, we determined in terms of feasibility that this site, this proposed project out on 55 is a, first of all, meets our criteria for feasibility, for viability for a project, and recommended that the client move forward with their, with their progress.
What did you determine with respect to demand for additional storage space in this, in this area?
Yeah, when looking at this question of feasibility, we look, we really look through four, four windows. First, we look at the project itself, the site itself. We look at things like accessibility, visibility, proximity to the market. We look at traffic counts and those kind of things. We look at the project itself and see how it's gonna fit in, with that site. Second, we look, we look at the market. We look at density. We look at various demographics. And particularly, we're trying to answer the question of the balance between supply and demand and how this project would affect that equilibrium. And what we found in this case was that the market that this facility will serve is significantly underserved, undersupplied.
And what are the other two? You mentioned four windows. What are the other two?
Yeah, the third is the competitors. Who else is in the market? What do they bring? Does, does this project bring any competitive advantage? And fourth, we look at the management and the proposed management of this project and how it compares to the management of those facilities that are in place now. That's a significant part of the success of a storage facility.
And how did you assess those windows as far as this facility is concerned?
In all cases, we, in all four of those windows, we looked at this project as being feasible, meeting our requirements, and our, in our estimation, a viable project. That second one, the, the window of market and the supply probably had the strongest, certainly had the strongest recommendation to move forward. But in all cases, we found reasons to recommend the project.
And what will, what will the effect, if this facility is approved and built, what will the, what, what effect will it have on the competitive nature of this type of business in this area?
Well, the same effect that competition has on everything. It helps to, it's, first, it will help with the undersupply. It'll help moderate rates, so the public will enjoy a little bit of moderation in rates because of a little better balance between supply and demand.
And how did you assess the, the operating success of this facility as a business?
Well, we look at a number of factors. I mentioned in the issue of supply and demand, we determined that, as I said, this market is significantly underserved and therefore, and with the rates that are in the market now, we determined that the, the revenue that this project can expect over the next five years would bring a significant, an acceptable return on the investment that they'll make.
So it is a, is it a sustainable use of this? It will, it will be here and operating for an extended period of time?
We certainly believe so, yes.
Will this facility be a benefit to the public?
A couple of ways. I mentioned that it'll relieve the undersupply of storage space in the market, and also continue to moderate rates.
Thank you, Mr. Copper.
Thank you.
Mr. Travis Fluid is our next witness.
Good evening. Travis Fluid with Kimley Horn and Associates, 421 Fayetteville Street in Raleigh. I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of North Carolina with over 12 years of experience performing traffic impact studies. I have a master's degree from the University of Texas at Austin. I have reviewed the development proposal of this case and its vehicle trip generation characteristics. The site is not expected to generate very much traffic on a daily basis, anticipating 178 vehicles entering and 178 vehicles entering, with 11 entering and nine exiting in the AM peak hour, and approximately 19 entering and 18 exiting in the PM peak hour. We have also looked at the impacts of this traffic at the adjacent signalized intersections to the north and south, that being Indian Wells Road to the north and Morrisville Parkway to the south. Analysis shows an increase in average delay of one second or less, with no change in level of service at both of these intersections in the AM and PM peak hours. And both of these intersections are expected to operate an acceptable level of service and build under this site. NC 55 and the other roadways in the area have sufficient capacity to handle the additional traffic safely. The daily traffic volume on NC 55 is approximately 25,000 vehicles per day, and the capacity for a four-lane roadway of that type is generally around 40,000 vehicles a day, so below capacity on a daily basis. We have addressed staff comments regarding pedestrian and vehicular circulation. We are making the, the drive aisle along the east side of the building a one-way drive aisle to better accommodate pedestrian circulation. So that, in my opinion, the site plan does create a safe condition for both vehicles and pedestrians, and provides a safe arrangement of sidewalks and driveways. We have looked at the emergency vehicle circulation through the site, and emergency vehicles do have safe ingress and egress through the site. There are really no traffic congestion impacts from this site, but we are mitigating our site traffic with the installation of a northbound right turn lane on NC 55 at our site entrance, and well as the construction of both curb and gutter and sidewalk along our site frontage on NC 55. And we have prepared a written report summarizing our findings that has been submitted to town staff, and would ask that that be submitted as part of the record.
And Mr. Fluid, you mentioned that you have adjusted the directional flow of traffic, made it one-way through this site.
That's correct.
Now, was, was that in response to a suggestion from staff?
It was, yes.
And would you show us on this site plan exactly what you're talking about here, what you did to mitigate pedestrian safety in this facility?
Certainly. So this, this drive aisle along the eastern edge of the site, we made that a one-way southbound. It's approximately 23 feet wide at its narrowest. Is that correct, Corey? And staff had recommended that be one-way in case people are walking along here, they don't have to deal with vehicles coming in both directions with that narrow crossing.
Okay. And our next witness will be Neil Gustafson.
My name is Neil Gustafson. I work with Worthy and Walk to Link, a commercial real estate firm in Raleigh located at 3803B Computer Drive. I've been asked to testify regarding the impact of this site on the adjoining and abutting properties. In this case, it's fairly easy. The property to the south is the most prominent use in the area that casts a shadow, both literally and figuratively, over this property. And certainly, this development will not have any impact on a water tower to the south. To the east of the property is a railroad track, which is slightly above the elevation of this site. It has a, there's a veil of trees on either side of the railroad track, but the other side of the railroad track is Upchurch Carpenter Road, and then there's a subdivision, a nice attractive subdivision, and a couple of undeveloped parcels in that vicinity. I think they'll be able to see this facility from there, but it's not gonna have any impact. It's, this is, you know, not windows looking into your house or anything like that, so there's no impact on the property to the east. The property to the north is owned by the owner of this property that's selling it to this client, and if it does have any impact, which I don't think it will, because it's designated, supposed to be developed for commercial purposes, if it does have an impact, it will impact the owner of the property anyway, so he would feel the impact. But again, I don't think, this is a low-intensity use. It's not gonna generate a lot of traffic, so I have no reason to believe that it will have any impact even on the property to the north. And then finally, the property to the west, across a four-lane divided highway, is undeveloped at this time, but, but again, the big, the big factor in this case is the road. I mean, it's the big, it's kind of a natural barrier. And I've seen properties like this, mini warehouses developed, I've looked at around, and generally speaking, mini warehouses don't have an adverse impact if you look at the sales around existing mini warehouse properties.
And you've done a statistical analysis? You've actually studied comparables and situations?
Of course. I mean, I've, I've been, I've been in this business, I should've said. I graduated from state and civil engineering in 1978, and I've been in the commercial real estate business ever since. I was talking to the consultant about how the mini warehouse business has changed. When it first started, when I got in the business, it was kind of an interim use, and they were really kind of cheap. And now, mini warehouses are very attractive adjacent uses with low-traffic impact, and I think they're very complementary uses to, to many cases.
And are you, are you a licensed MAI appraiser?
I am.
In North Carolina?
I am.
And how long did you say you've been engaged as an MAI appraiser?
I've been an MAI, I think, since 94, I think. Something like that, could be earlier. I got a master's in business from Duke for whatever that's worth, too. And when you're talking about a mini warehouse, it didn't really have any impact.
Well, thank you, Mr. Gustafson. Mr. Mayor, in closing, we have worked hard to address all seven of the criteria in the LDO for the, the approval of a special use permit for this use. I think we've established with respect to each of those criteria, that each of the elements of the specific criterion are satisfied. We have also addressed the LDO's criteria for the approval of a, of a site plan, and again, have established, I believe, that each one of those criteria has been properly met and satisfied. So we look forward to answering your questions at the appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Now's the time where we invite other speakers who have been sworn in and would like to speak in support of the application to approach the podium, and I'll invite the first speaker forward. Seeing no one, we'll continue, and I would invite cross-examination of the witnesses who have testified in support of their request. Seeing none, we'll open the hearing to those who are opposed to the request, and I would invite the first speaker forward.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak here. I'm no expert by any stretch.
Give us your name, please.
Oh, my name is Charat Patel. I, I live at 402 Old Carpenter Way in the estates of Old Carpenter, which is adjacent to the old tracks on the east side of the proposed property. Like I was saying, I'm no expert at, at land development. I, I do have bachelor's in computer and electronic engineering, and I, I'm a network engineer. I design cloud for living. The concerns that I have with this proposed plan is that we are the first house, as you add, in the community, and as it is, there's a lot of noise that comes from NC 55, trains, and this, the addition of this property is just gonna make a lot of noise. One of the reasons, I, I moved down to Cary from New Hampshire, after living in New Hampshire for 17 years, because we found the town of Cary to be very peaceful, very quiet, very attractive place to live, and now we're just finding ourselves in, in the middle of a lot of noise. Having this property next to us is just gonna create a lot of noise. I have a newborn. He's 18 days old. There have been a lot of construction trucks coming out nearby our house, marking the, marking the road right in front of our yard, in our driveway. And apparently, the proposed plan is that this property is going to tap into our sewer line, sewer line that's going into our community. The concerns that I have is this is a commercial property tapping into a residential sewer line. I, I don't know the ramifications of what would happen if there is a backlog, if there's an overflow, if, if our pipe is not big enough for the pipe that is being drawn from underneath the tracks from this property. I'm pretty sure the north, northern property is also going to tap into that sewer line, so I, I don't, I don't have those plans. I don't, I don't know what's going to happen down the stretch. My concern is that I'm the first house. There are other neighbors, they have the same concerns, but they're not here today, unfortunately, to, to back up, back me up. But I need to know, and I would like to know, what is the plan that is being proposed by the developer, by the builder, by the clients, and those in favor of this proposed plan to make sure that if they are going to tap into our sewer line, it's going to be adequate enough? That's about it. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Anyone else to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, I would invite cross-examination. No cross-examination. We'll now ask if anyone who has been sworn in has objections to the competency of any evidence. Seeing no one, we'll continue. And does either party believe new evidence has been presented tonight that warrants the continuance of this hearing? Nope? All right. We'll now move to the deliberative phase of the hearing and open it up to council members for questions or comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Could we offer rebuttal testimony? I'd like to address some of the questions.
Sure. Please.
Thank you, sir.
And I'd like to, some of the staff.
And I'd like to, some other staff's decision before deliberation.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed you.
That's okay.
Sorry. I don't know, I went right over to the staff.
That's okay.
Mayor wants to go home.
And a few clarifications I'd like to make, and let me, the public sewer for this project is coming from the west. There's a public sewer line in the public street serving the residential development that will be extended through the street underneath, I think they're boring underneath the railroad line, Mr. Howell could confirm that more accurately, and on to the subject property extending to the north. So that is a public sewer lot extension.
From the which direction, from the west?
From the east. There's a residential subdivision to the east. That's not good. There we go. So this residential development here has a public sewer that comes in and terminates approximately this location. They're going to tie into that public sewer and extend it in the right-of-way, and then bring it across the one-piece private property they are crossing into railroad, which they have to obtain permission to do that, bring it on this property, and they're actually going to, and this is, my understanding is this is the same property, these several properties. So that's a staff-level review, for what that's worth.
Thank you very much, and I would invite you forward for, I'm sorry.
A few, I'm sorry, just a few other quick observations.
Please, go ahead.
He mentioned a, Mr. Lacy mentioned, Mr. Reeves, excuse me, mentioned a rental agreement. Staff has not seen or reviewed that rental agreement to confirm the contents of it. If you would like to make that binding, it would not be binding unless made into a condition. Also wanted to note, we did have a potential concern about the pedestrian connectivity in the layout of the site. As they've mentioned, their willingness to make that one-way, the traffic circulation to help enhance pedestrian safety, which it's going to be a low amount of volume of pedestrian traffic there.
That's an understatement.
That wouldn't, that would not be binding unless there was a condition made, there is a condition suggested by staff in your, in your report, in the staff report. Lastly, but not least, just wanted to mention, this site, as I mentioned, has no streams in the wetlands, has no greenway, plans, has minimal raining needs, has no mature trees, of course, no champion trees, so very few development constraints, which of course is enabling the requested development program from the staff. And with that, I can happily turn it over to Mr. Reeves and the advocates team for further question.
Please.
I'd like to ask Mr. Howell to come back up, please. Mr. Howell, you've heard Mr. Patel express concern about the way this site will be sewed. Can you tell us a little bit more about how the sewer utility will serve this site?
Yes, the current property owner, the seller of the property to public storage, has a project that staff may be able to answer more details about, but my understanding of it from plans that I have reviewed is that the sewer will be provided across, boring directly under the railroad right-of-way, across to Carpenter Upchurch Road, and then connecting into, thank you, connecting into an existing, yeah.
Thank you. Pretty much what our staff just said, right?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Correct, that's correct. And so that will provide sewer to the site.
And that is a public sewer line?
Correct, that will be a public sewer line.
And staff has determined that sewer, that line has capacity to adequately serve this develop?
I'll defer to staff to answer that question, but my understanding is that it was permitted once before, and there were some minor modifications that are currently under review.
I'm not qualified to answer that question, other than to state that, of course, has to receive full approval from staff before it can be approved, and this development project cannot move forward without public sewer.
Mr. Patel also mentioned a concern about noise. He mentioned the railroad track, he mentioned the highway noise from NC-55. How much noise will this facility generate?
Yeah, this facility will generate very little noise, as was referenced in Mr. Fluid's testimony, it's very low-traffic generation on the site, and the buildings that will be proposed will actually help to provide a buffer to NC-55. Unfortunately, will not buffer the properties to the east from the railroad tracks as we're west of the railroad tracks, but it will provide a buffer to NC-55.
And you want to comment on the topography of this site and the visibility of the improvements that are proposed from NC-55?
Yes, the site currently generally ranges in grades, about 10 feet across the site, and portions of the site do sit up about eight feet or so from NC-55. The proposed project will level out the site in order to allow for the proposed development. However, when in the finished condition, the preliminary plans at this point indicate that the final grade of the building in the site will be approximately three to four feet above existing grade of NC-55.
And so what will be visible from NC-55, just a single building?
Basically, yeah, building one that is primarily along NC-55 will be visible as well as the second building, which is, building six, I believe, let me just look at, building three, excuse me, that is along NC-55, as well as our 30-foot streetscape buffer, which we're required to have per code, so those will be visible.
And I believe one of the conditions, one of the zoning conditions requires an opaque buffer across the rear of this property, is that correct?
Yes, there is a, well, there is a type, type B buffer 20 foot wide along the railroad track facade after you get past the, between the, excuse me, between the buildings and the railroad track right-of-way, so.
Thank you, Mr. Howell.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Loveland, you have anything else?
Just point of clarification, the requirement along the eastern proper line is for a type B semi-opaque buffer with an increased shrub requirement from eight feet to five feet, so five feet on center.
Okay.
Can I just have a clarification for the record? I think Mr. Reeves mentioned some reports. The only report that was submitted to you all as an exhibit is the traffic impact analysis, but you did have the testimony tonight of their appraiser and the market analysis, but we don't have the appraisal report or another report in the record, I just wanted to clarify that.
Mr. Gustafson, I think you have copies you'd like to offer. That's all.
Anything else from staff?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Gad, we've kind of jumped all around, I have a script, and we've been way off that script. I want to ask you if we've got all our bases covered before we go into deliberative phase.
We do.
Okay, very good. So council members, we're going to go into the deliberative phase of this meeting, and I'll open it up to comments and questions.
And for the record, the exhibit is being introduced to you, that's the appraisal report, so we'll mark that as an exhibit and include it in the record.
Very good. Comments?
Some comments, but if it's a question.
It's glad there are no stubs. Got a question, are there, this, the lease thing that's not a part because there were no conditions made? I think we've had some discussion before of many storages that included conditions. Is the applicant going to make conditions or make the rental agreement part of the record to be conditioned, or is that, we take your word for it, that there are going to be no rock bands or strained quartets practicing?
We would accept conditions of that nature if the council chose to add them to a special use permit. I mean, we would, we would accept a condition, of course, that no rock bands will utilize this facility for practice. We will accept a condition that there will not be the storage of flammable or toxic substances on this premises.
Mr. Reeves, I just want to make clear, we're not in position to require, but you're in position to offer?
And we are.
I thought you can require a quasi.
Can we require?
You actually can require conditions, yes.
Okay. Very good.
But we offer those conditions.
Okay, very good. Other question?
Was that the, was what you, with the testimony that you made earlier about the rental agreements of all that, are you offering the entirety of what you listed previously?
Yes, I am.
As those conditions?
Yes.
But we don't, but we not excluding, you're picking on rock bands, or you're just saying musical, you're just saying no musical practices of any sort? I'm thinking about noise generation, I'm thinking about.
Yes, yes, and that would be acceptable, yes. That it would, it would not.
Not sure how we define that.
I don't know whether there's a practice.
Most storage units just basically eliminate the use of the facilities for music, practice, rock bands, that kind of stuff. So if we made that a condition, I think you eliminate most of your noise generators.
So that would.
And I think one other thing that was mentioned in earlier testimony was no use for secondary businesses and that sort of thing.
That was my next question.
Do we really need to make that a condition?
That has happened in other storage facilities, to my knowledge.
No kidding.
Because they may have a woodworking shop, they may use electricity and be have a buzzsaw going all day long, or a table saw, and that adds noise to the neighborhood. I don't think they want that in the public storage.
Exactly, and we will.
But I want to make sure they make it the condition.
We will, we will offer a condition that there would be no active conduct of a business from one of these rental units.
I wish my storage unit actually had a power outlet.
So you could use your saw.
No, it's like plug a light in.
I have a quick question, is there, do you happen to have the map of the National Register Historic Carpenter District handy? Because I believe it abuts this property, is that correct? It crosses over.
I have it on my, my computer.
I looked it up as well.
I don't have it as part of my presentation, I apologize, I'm not familiar with that district.
Okay. It does.
Okay, and do you have the seven criteria? Could you put those up, please?
The seven approval criteria are in your staff report, I don't have a slide.
You don't have a slide for it? Okay, I just wanted everybody to see it.
Are you ready for comments?
Seven criteria approval for the SGP and six for the site plan, of course.
Yes, yes, I'm certainly ready for comments.
Before we, as we're in the deliberative and commenting phase, normally, I'm, I've been a proponent of the storage facilities, and I know that there's a big market, because obviously, you wouldn't come to us and say, we want to build one, if people weren't asking you for it. I do have some concerns about this. There is just about across the street, and a block down, there's already one, there's already three within a quarter of a mile, right? So my, my concern here is that 55 is beginning to become mini-storage way, where, you know, we're going to have four storage facilities on either side of 55 as people come through Cary, as they maybe go to work or as they come home. I believe that the storage facilities now look better than they used to, I do, but this plethora of storage facilities, is it harmonious to this community? Well, it's harmonious to the fact that there's other storage facilities, but if these were drive-throughs, or if these were other types of restaurants, or, you know, retail, we might be having a different discussion, because they're all storage facilities. The feasibility study means that you can make money, it doesn't mean that it's the right use for this important access that we have. I'm also concerned about the fact that it, directly it butts the Carpenter District, the National Register Historic Carpenter District. That concerns me, I think that there's some potential other uses that could go here. It actually is right on the side, not that far away from the Carpenter farm supply that we've recently been talking about with Imagine Cary. So although I have supported these in the past, and I, and I see that this is a tough piece of property, I'm torn to whether or not it meets the criteria of this being harmonious with the rest of what we have here in Highway 55, and I'm not, I'm not leaning that way, I'd like to hear what the rest of council members.
And I support a lot of what you said, and I actually wrote down a lot of what you said, so I, we're thinking alive here, I like here. One of the concerns I have is along 55, you get this industrial feel, that's not the Cary that we're used to, and we want to do what we can to make it more harmonious with the neighborhoods around it. This one neighborhood to the east, east, we'll be looking at it, we'll be looking at the railroad, we'll be looking at the semi-opaque buffer, so they'll see the back of it, and if I remember the rendering, it's plain along the back. So that's not a pleasant view, and that's, that's not harmonious, and, but my biggest concern is that it's a catty corner, I would say, to the Carpenter Historic District, and we spend a lot of time and a lot of money talking about how that is planned and how that's going to move forward, and so I have a concern that this is not harmonious with that as well.
Mr. Mayor, I found a copy of.
We're making comments, please, and we'll ask questions if we need it. This is a comment, if council members have questions of Mr. Reeves, we'll let him add testimony. Other comments?
While I appreciate the comments that have been made, there's not but so many uses that are going to go on this site adjacent to the railroad track in as skinny a parcel as it is. I'm actually pleased with the fact that it is an incredibly low-traffic generator. I was actually stunned to hear that it would predict it to have 178 trips a day. When I go to mine, I feel like I'm the only car in and the only car out, which made the pedestrian thingy, the one-way street, really funny, because the cars that aren't there are going to not hit the pedestrians that aren't there. There is a demand for this, whether you believe it or not. I actually just recently, a few months ago, looked for a storage unit to put a truck I'm restoring into, and it took me four until I found one that actually had one that would work. So there is a demand. The reality is Cary's an incredibly fast-growing community, lots of new homes, lots of new families, and they have lots of stuff. And if everybody else's wife is like my wife, they don't throw anything away. Regarding the gentleman's question, or concerns regarding noise and things like that, I think the applicant's been willing to condition the property accordingly, so that there's no rock bands, no secondary business uses, no flammable substances or chemicals, that kind of stuff. I appreciate the concern regarding the Carpenter Historic District. To me, I don't know what other use you'd prefer that's really going to generate little to no impact whatsoever. You know, yeah, you might get a flat wall up against the railroad track, but, you know, with some good plannings and meeting town code, I don't know that's so much of a concern for me, so I'm inclined to support the proposal.
Other comments from this end of the table?
It's next to the railroad track, it's a narrow sliver. You know, the one point is, is the industrial feel that you're getting, and I mean, I understand that, but I'm not sure what else you'd want there, so, you know, I'm inclined to give this consideration. Mr. George?
I also had that Carpenter question, because I pulled it up on my map program here, and I feel like it is catty-cornered. You know, if they were going to contribute to the Carpenter Historic District, maybe it's not this property that would do the contribution, but the one to the north, when they sell the one to the north, because that's the one that's going to be much closer to the, to the Historic Carpenter District, and serving on the Public Art Advisory Board as liaison, it seems to me like there's an opportunity, whether it's a mural or something that's beside a railroad track, you get things that could have a feel that could actually enhance our Carpenter Village feel, but this seems so far to the south, and there's already a water tower, I just don't see that it makes, it's behind, it's up next to houses, not to the Historic District. I think the one to the north is the one I've got concern at. There's going to be a gas station with lights and a 24-hour thing to the north, I'm more concerned about the north than this one, so I'm inclined to say this is, to the south is fine with me.
And just, so you know, if you're looking at the map, it does come down into the property. So if you're looking at the map, the bottom part of the National Register Historic District, where that bottom line is, the southern line, you'll see that it comes pretty low on, it actually, if you cross over to the west of it, it's more than the northern piece. I don't know.
It hits, but there's, but there's houses, I guess there's that one little area, is that what you're saying, the areas above the?
Yeah.
Wish I could see what you're looking at.
I don't know if they.
Can I just point out, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Bush, we haven't had any actual testimony or evidence introduced tonight about the Carpenter National Historic District. I know you all know about it, but. I know you all know about it, but there was no testimony describing that or talking about the Imagine Cary process. So I'm a little hesitant, unless we get some additional testimony from staff who may be present, to use that as a basis for decision-making.
So we can just say it's not harmonious in our opinion and leave it at that?
I think, you know, if you're inclined and would like evidence in the record about Carpenter, you know, we should try to do that with staff who are here. I'm not sure if Mr. Olma is here and could be sworn in, or if any of our other planning staff feel comfortable talking about that a little bit.
I'll just withdraw my comments and just say it's not harmonious with the neighborhood that's going to be looking at the back of it.
I would like to make a statement that it abuts the National Register. So if someone on staff can come to speak to the Carpenter National Register Historic District and show a map. Is there anyone on staff?
I can get sworn in and speak to it a little bit, if you'd like.
Thank you.
How are you picking those up? I'll search for it. I'm trying. I can't find it. Never mind, I think I got it.
You're correct. It is in the Carpenter... It's adjacent to the Carpenter Historic District, and it is in the Carpenter area plan.
It is. The slice is in the Carpenter area plan.
I believe the district comes... The historic district comes down to here.
There you go.
Okay. Well, there we go. Red line is the...
It was there.
Carpenter Area District.
Thank you. That was exactly what I wanted. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Other questions or comments?
Can you tell me what businesses were in this district south of the proposal? What other developments might be in that pink skinny stuff?
Here? This is the town... The water tank.
It's got a water tank?
Right here. And I'm not aware of any development proposals for this piece at this time, something that could come in tomorrow.
What about south of the road?
It's trees on Google Earth, it looks like.
Find a map I can speak from.
I just didn't know if anything's there or not.
There's nothing... I think it's farther down below the stream buffer. This is undeveloped. This is a lay-down yard for Mastech, a utility company. They have their trucks and poles to lay down farther south. This is the American Army Corps of Engineers Mini Storage.
Okay.
American soil and mulch is right there.
Thank you.
Unless there are other comments, I believe we're in... Ready for a motion on the annexation.
Do you want the annexation first?
That's the order it has to come in.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the annexation.
Second. There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Motion passes three to two for the special use.
For the reasons discussed, I move that we approve the request for the special use made by the applicant, as the request meets all the approval criteria of Section 3.8.3 of the LDO. This approval is conditioned upon the following: that the resolution and permit approved this special use request be recorded with the Wake County Register of Deeds upon the expiration of the appeal period, Section 3.8.4E of the LDO; that the approval of this special use is conditioned on the subsequent approval of a development plan in accordance with LDO Section 3.8.1B2, and as required under LDO Section 3.9; all drive aisles and vehicular use areas within the secure portion of the site, being the portion of the site located behind Building One, and within the security fence as shown on the approved sketch plan, shall be designated for one-way circulation via the use of signage and pavement markings as directed by the Town of Cary; and that there will be no musical and/or rock band practices allowed at this facility; that there be no flammable substances and/or chemicals stored at this facility; and that there be no secondary business uses allowed at this facility.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Okay. I'm just trying to see if all your conditions were the conditions that he'd offered, the rental agreement to be complete, or if there's a way to modify.
What are you looking for?
I just... My memory's not what it used to be, all the things that he said.
I was going to suggest, and I've spoken with Mr. Reeves, that he didn't have sort of a longer list earlier when he spoke, and that if it's approved tonight, that the motion could be, you know, the conditions you read, and then with the conditions that the things that he offered earlier, then he and I and Mr. Gad will work on that language for the conditions, and it would be in the written resolution that comes back to you for approval at a later meeting.
I'll make my motion to include that.
Mr. Smith, you agree?
I gleefully agree.
All right.
And just one more comment. That's... Are we in the discussion phase of the motion?
Yes.
I thank you, Mr. Overton, for bringing up the plan. I think we've spent a lot of time and effort, not only talking about the plan, but obviously the importance of this National... Carpenter National Register Historic District. And I think one of my concerns as we move forward with this is that all this time and energy in the plan, and we're potentially approving something that doesn't fit into all the discussions that we've had about the Carpenter plan. So I just thought, thank you very much for bringing that up. That meant it was a great deal of information.
Just to follow up on that, the land is currently zoned O and I, correct?
ORTCU.
ORTCU, which this is an allowed use.
The special use.
With the special use, it's not allowed.
Right.
Also, I'd like to say, Ms. Bush, I think I agree that the harmonious part of this, it seems to me, might be harmonious in that it doesn't introduce noise and traffic and congestion as something else might introduce. So in that regard, I think it leaves a little tranquility in the sea of all this busyness. And I believe we do have a... I believe that does fit more harmoniously. We're not going to get a feed store over here or something. We just... I think we're in...
Feed store probably pretty harmonious.
There is a feed store.
We're not going to get one.
There is a feed store.
It would be harmonious, but I don't think we're going to get one right there, is what I'm saying.
Okay. We have a motion and a second further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right. Now motion for the site plan.
Did it pass?
What was the...
That was a special use. You need a motion for the site plan.
Was it a three to two vote?
Yes.
It was a three to two. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Did I not call the motion?
I don't think you voted.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's do that again, just to make sure we're clear. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Does oppose? No. Can't believe it, I didn't call the motion. I'm in a hurry, I guess. Now, motion for the site plan.
You still haven't called the motion.
All in... Yeah, I did.
No.
You didn't say motion approves or motion passes?
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
You did it.
All opposed?
The pass is three to two.
Motion passes three to two.
There you go.
Okay. Motion on the site plan.
For the reasons discussed, I move that we approve the proposed site plan with conditions as stated below, as it meets all the approval criteria set forth in Section 3.9.2I of the LDO. This approval is conditioned upon the following: that the applicant must satisfactorily address all remaining DRC comments on their master plan set submitted for signature.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Sure.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Does oppose? No. Motion carries three to two. Mr. Gad, we butchered this pretty good. Want to make sure that we've got everything in order before we close this public hearing.
I think you do.
All right. Very good. I'll close the public hearing, and thanks to everyone in attendance. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
There's a motion and a second.